Okay, good evening, everyone. I want to start this meeting by apologizing to Mr. Factor. We're here tonight to reconsider his application for filling a vacancy on the planning board. His application had previously been considered by this board at a meeting on Monday, April 22nd. Process used by the board in considering his application on that Monday night raised concern for members of this board, for the town manager, for town council, and could have been perceived by those in attendance to be unfair. Simply put, that meeting did not meet the standards to which this board should be held. For that, I as chair apologize to you, Danny. In particular, I want to address the allegation that this board considered Danny's application outside of a public meeting. Prior to the meeting in which the board considers Danny's application, I spoke to a quorum of the board concerning the substance of their votes on this topic. In doing so, I unknowingly violated the open meeting law. Although no open meeting law complaint has been filed to this date on this violation, in an effort to be fully transparent about those communications, prior to any revote on Danny's application, Town Council's office conducted an investigation and review of those communications. I have asked Nan Pickering Cook to describe her findings.
Thank you, Madam Chair. As the chair mentioned, I undertook an initial investigation of concerns that were raised regarding out-of-open meeting comments and discussions between the board. That included speaking to each member of the board, as well as reviewing any email correspondence that they had, either in their selectman account or personal accounts concerning Mr. Factors' application. The out-of-meeting communications I discovered were as follows. On the first, on Tuesday, April 2nd, at town meeting, Joan Gardner and John Benson discussed concerns with Danny Factors' application to the planning board. Around the same time, Joan Gardner spoke to Dean Charter about her concerns. Dean Charter stated that he was not in favor of that appointment. Again, these are paraphrasing of those conversations; these are not exact quotes. Wednesday, April 17th, Joan Gardner called John Benson to discuss putting Danny's appointment on the consent agenda for the next board meeting. They discussed the process to hold it off of consent to allow for further discussion. On Thursday, April 18th, or Friday, April 19th, Joan Gardner called Dean Charter. She notified him of Danny's application, that it would be on the consent agenda, discussed her phone call to Danny, and that he was not inclined to withdraw his application. Dean Charter said he would hold it from consent, given his concerns with the appointment. Around that same time, Joan Gardner called Peter Berry. She called to discuss the historical context of not approving appointments to boards and of holding nominations from consent. In this phone call, Joan Gardner did not ask, and Peter Berry did not offer his position with respect to Danny's appointment. Around that same time, Joan Gardner called David Martin. She described for him the process as a new board member that would be undertaken for the hearing. There was no substantive discussion beyond that. Joan Gardner did not ask, and David Martin did not offer his position with respect to Danny's appointment. Sunday, April 21st, John Benson called Joan Gardner. They discussed the emails received by the board in support of Danny's appointment and the process they were going to undertake for the vote. John Benson mentioned to Joan Gardner at that time that he believed Dean Charter was not in favor of Danny's appointment. On Monday, April 22nd, prior to the opening of the Board of Selectmen's meeting, John Benson mentioned to Dean Charter in passing, something to the effect of, "I think we have a four-to-one vote." Dean Charter did not respond in any substantive way.
Thank you. Now, as we move forward to consider Danny's application anew, I think it is helpful for the board and the public to be aware of the context in which his application comes to this board. The planning board currently has two vacancies, at least for the next year. The town has taken the first step in voting to reduce the required membership of the planning board from seven to five full members, and from two associates to one associate member. That process will not be complete until it is voted on at the next annual election. In the meantime, the planning board needs members in order to operate with a quorum. We have recently appointed Sam Boshwar to fill one open slot. Sam's application was considered by the VCC simultaneously with Danny's, and both applicants received recommendation by the VCC to this board by unanimous vote. I want to remind members of the board and members of the audience that this meeting and the deliberation over Danny's application tonight will be conducted as if the prior meeting never took place. Any comments made in the prior meeting that you would like this board to consider before voting should be made again. This goes for the board members as well. This may seem repetitive, but it is important to get this process right, separate and apart from the mistakes made in conjunction with the prior vote. The meeting will proceed as follows. Danny is permitted 15 minutes to make a statement on his application. The board will then question Danny and make comments, including disclosures of any emails or other communications received outside of the meeting concerning Danny's application that each member is considering in its vote. The public will then be permitted to comment or question Danny and/or the board. This will be limited to 45 minutes, or until each person has had the opportunity to speak. In order to ensure that all who came to speak have an opportunity, I ask speakers to limit comments or questions to three minutes initially, with more time, should time allow, after all have spoken. The board will then deliberate the application and vote. Danny?
My name is Danny Factor, and I first want to thank the Volunteer Coordinating Committee for their unanimous recommendation of me for consideration and appointment to fill a vacancy on the planning board. I want to thank the Board of Selectmen for giving me the opportunity of a rehearing tonight. It's much appreciated for its decision to allow public comments as well. As I said, my name is Danny Factor. I'm 56 years old, and I live on Davis Road in the Briarbrook Village Apartments. I've lived in Acton for 17 years, and in Massachusetts for 20 years. My late partner Nadia and I raise a family here in Acton. Our son, Mandela, is an AB graduate and a sophomore at college, majoring in art and physics. Now, I'm sure you know that when you're a parent, you hear your fair share of complaints from your kids, but one that Mandela has reiterated to both his parents is how much he liked growing up in Acton. From the many friends that he made growing up at the Briarbrook Village Apartments, to Acton-Boxborough High School, where he once said, "What I really like about AB is that the teachers treat you like you're an adult." It's a pretty nice comment, I think. I can't tell you enough how much, when your community contributes to the well-being of your family, that it makes you want to give back to your community. I've also had tragedy in my life with the loss of Nadia at age 52, less than two years ago, and experiences like that also make you want to give to others in our community that suffer hardship and tragedy. In my professional life, I'm a public interest attorney, which means that I've taken an oath to be an officer of the court. That obligates me to act truthfully, in good faith, and with integrity. I'm proud to be an active citizen in town, attending all Acton Town meetings during the past decade. I am most honored to have served on the Acton Commission on Disabilities for the last nine years, and particularly proud to be associated with members of our commission, the Board of Selectmen liaisons, and the thousands of people in Acton who live with physical and mental disabilities. I'm proud to live in a town that values access for all, and lists in its master plan the principle of inclusion, that every single person matters. This matches with core values that I learned from my parents, that every single person deserves dignity, respect, and love, everyone. On the Commission on Disabilities, I've served for the last six years as COD Access Coordinator, the last few years along with COD member Joan Burrows. As Access Coordinator, I met regularly with Frank Ramsbottom from the Building Department on the matter of issuing building permits and occupancy permits where access is an issue. When required, I was a COD liaison to Tom Hopkins, the Executive Director of the State Architectural Access Board, which governs the enforcement of the building code. I'm also the COD liaison to the Acton Housing Authority, and helped forge important connections between the COD and the AHA, which is an important link in our town to make sure that people with disabilities have adequate housing. I also try to do my part in town, whether it be as an environmentalist, sitting on the Board of Directors of Green Acton, or having been a volunteer at Household Goods, which is another shining light in our town. My attitude towards service is as follows: Listen to your core values, your moral compass, but also talk with as many people in town as possible, especially one-on-one. Suggest coffee or tea a lot. Listen very closely to what people say, and try to put yourself in their footprints. Recognize that not everybody has the same upbringing and influences, and recognize that all voices matter. Try very hard to see their point of view. Think about if there are ways to find consensus between different opinions. Is there some broad goal that folks of different perspectives can still agree on? Support constructive discourse toward reaching that consensus, dialogue. Never insult anyone personally, and avoid trigger words. Those are things that I base my actions on when I interact with my community. For many of the reasons stated above, I think I would be a good contributor and a strong addition to our planning board. As the board, and many other, if you know, our planning board's chief responsibilities are reviewing applications for special permits for residential projects, considering zoning changes, and overseeing rules and regulations regarding subdivisions. I'll state a few reasons why I think I would be a good match. First of all, as an attorney, I have expertise in how to be familiar with legalities that boards must deal with. This, as lawyers say, may include, but is not limited to, the many sections of Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 41, which governs the jurisdiction of town planning boards, and also interpretation regarding our town bylaws and master plan that refer to the planning board. Also, as an attorney, I have an obligation to sublimate my personal opinion and biases to the extent that they conflict with a fair and lawful deliberation and adjudication of all matters. I have sworn an oath to be faithful to the law, and that integrity is an asset that I bring to the board. Second, my experience on town and other boards in our community gives me a record of experience in helping boards maximize performance on boards, such as experience I have with strategic planning, and familiarity with the resources of town government in general. My experience on boards and commissions also gives me substantive experience related to the work of the planning board, such as my knowledge of issues related to environmental sustainability, to affordable, accessible housing, to transportation. Third, I think I bring diversity to our town government, which is a goal in our master plan. As a public interest attorney who does a lot of pro bono work, I live modestly in a small apartment on a very low budget, and as such, I am representative of a large segment of our population who lives modestly and in apartments. I think we all agree that when we act in town government, it should never be about me. Rather, it is about ensuring that all segments of society have a voice, and those voices are being heard and represented. Each person brings their own living experience to town boards, and my perspective, though no more valid than anybody else's, is also no less valid and deserves to be heard. Because of this, I think it should be the very rare instance in which the Board of Selectmen rejects someone who offers to volunteer to serve on town boards that are important to running the town. The standard for serving on a board should never be that a citizen's life experience and opinions and core values be in lockstep or anywhere near in lockstep with the town. I disagree respectfully with those who feel that enhancing diversity that comes from different life experiences constitutes an agenda, any more than anyone else on any board or committee has an agenda for the way that they approach living in a democratic All of us have different life experiences, and citizens on town boards that represent a wider group of citizens does not injure the running of government; it enhances it. The standard for a member of an important town board should never be anywhere near in lockstep with the views of the BOS, the Board of Selectmen, or even the majority of the town. Rather, democracy and our master plan calls for a town which is culturally and economically diverse, and the people deserve a town government that protects both majority rights and minority rights. In that way, things that I bring to the board, for example, because of my economic diversity, my knowledge of issues related to environmental sustainability, people with disabilities, will, in my humble opinion, make our town stronger. Lastly, I ask for your vote to be appointed to the planning board because of the support that I have received in town. My candidacy was brought to the Volunteer Coordinating Committee unanimously by a vote of four to zero. At last count, the Board of Selectmen has received 15 emails from Acton residents, every one in favor of my candidacy, and none opposed, and there are also folks here that would like to comment as well after I speak. In the case of the 15 emails that I referred to, I'm particularly honored that my support comes from a wide range of people. Politically, it includes letters of support from conservatives, liberals, and independents. It also includes comments from two former select people, several existing committee members, the Chair of the Commission on Disabilities, which I serve on, and, just as importantly, people who have little association with town government, because in this case, they felt compelled to write something. In this way, it is not just my candidacy, which I support; it is the candidacy of any citizen of Acton, whether I agree with their substantive positions or not, so long as they have been successfully screened by the VCC for conflicts of interest and anything else that the VCC expresses concerns about. Otherwise, we are not reaching out enough to make sure that our town is democratic, especially when there's a shortage on committees right now. Once on the planning board, you have my absolute guarantee that I pledge to be fair, and by that I mean, not only to those in town who may be more like me, but in particular to those who disagree with me. I pledge to constructive discourse. I pledge to dialogue. I pledge to understanding different points of views, and looking for compromises and consensuses. I also pledge to be particularly responsible in my public statements as a citizen, given that I would be a member of the town planning board. Enhanced discretion goes with the responsibility of being on an important board. Can I say that I have a proven record of constructive discourse? Absolutely yes, and you have testimonials from several citizens stating that I excel at this. Can I say that I am perfect and have never failed at substantive and social tasks as well? No. So while I do, like all of us sometimes, fall short of my intentions, you can count on me to create far more consensus and progress than stagnation and discord. You can count on my humility and ability to apologize, which I do now, for any of my shortcomings. But I do think that so many citizens of our town have together presented a documented, supportive record of my strengths and particular assets for service on the planning board. This record they have provided to you humbles me and makes me all the more interested in serving on their behalf and serving our town. I thank you for giving me, as well as the citizens of our town, whether on the Volunteer Coordinating Committee, the planning board, this board, or any of the other committees and commissions, or whether they are otherwise doing their part in town in so many other ways to contribute to the life of our town. I hope to continue to serve Acton in this new role, and if you appoint me, I promise that I will do my best to make you proud by respecting the role and all the people of our town. Thank you.
Thank you. Do any members of the board have questions for Danny? David?
Hi, Danny. So I just have several questions. In recent Kelly's Corner discussions, you spoke personally against the turning lanes when you weren't speaking for Green Acton, just on your own. As you know, being a member of the Commission on Disabilities, there are numerous safety advantages to the new design for people with disabilities and others: sound indications at crosswalks, protected crosswalks, curb cuts, et cetera. I wonder if your stand on Kelly's Corner is for some other reason than the disabilities thing, because it seems to me that the, overall, there's an advantage to Kelly's Corner for people with disabilities, and you've, you mentioned the people with disabilities and the safety issue when talking against the Kelly's Corner project, and, you know, so it makes me wonder whether the, there's just a reason to make it, to limit growth in the town by making it inconvenient to people to drive in town. Can you comment on that?
Yes, sure. So, the Commission on Disabilities discussed at length the Kelly's Corner project and decided in the end to take, they actually voted in favor of taking no position on the matter. And I think that, I think that the commission considered it to be a very complex matter, because you're absolutely right, David. There are some wonderful things for people with disabilities about the new Kelly's Corner plan. As you know, the Americans with Disabilities Act requires that any substantive change put us in line with the ADA, but I have to, you know, commend the town for even going further in many respects. So there's no question as far as sidewalks, for example, and, you know, some other aspects as well. You know, this is a plan that is friendly with people, for people with disabilities, and it made it very hard for the commission to balance that with, with other aspects of the plan. The concern that was expressed, and it was expressed by me, and I want to also say that what I'm about to say is an example of a personal position that I expressed in a committee that's an advisory committee and actually takes stands on issues, warrant items having to do with town meetings. I might come to a different conclusion in an adjudicatory procedure, where I have to, you know, use different legal standards to make a decision. But my personal position, to be frank, was that there were also concerns about the plan for people with disabilities, namely about the plan being particularly car-friendly with the wider streets, for example, and, you know, that was, that was one of the concerns as well. So I think overall, it was a very tough decision for the commission, and I certainly understand why the commission ended up taking, taking that position. So I think that there were pros and cons.
Do you agree with the, do you agree with the commission's decision?
I personally, my, my decision was that I think we can do better. I think that there are aspects of the plan that are very good, but my personal position was that the plan was particularly car-friendly, both from a point of view of looking at matters from the, the effect on people with disabilities, and also environmental sustainability as well.
Thank you. What, what's your opinion overall about development projects in the town, both residential and, and commercial, maybe like Acton Village Works?
Sure. So there's, it's not a question of whether you're pro-development or anti-development. You know, the question is, you know, how should we develop, and what are the type of development, development that we're looking for to enhance our community? So to give you an example of a project that I'm very much for is the North Acton Firehouse, for example. You know, as far as you mentioned in West Acton, I think, I think one of the things that we really want to do, and I know we, we try as best we can, is to support small local business. That's something I very much support.
Are there, are there any other development projects that you'd be in favor of, you know, that are not municipal projects? Maybe something that's happened in the past couple of years?
Sure. I mean, I mean, I think, you know, my experience particularly being liaison to the Acton Housing Authority and becoming familiar with the waiting lists, you know, for example, make me very concerned, as so many people in town are, about the plight of seniors and low-income individuals as well. And that's something that, you know, I have experience on, working on, both on the Commission on Disabilities and also with, as liaison to the Acton Housing Authority as well.
Okay, one more, one more question. A personal mantra of mine is that people must be able to participate in the process, but no one gets to block. Can you comment on your working style and what you would do on an issue where your opinion was different than other people on the planning board?
Yeah. So, first of all, I'm only one person in a commission on seven, you know, on the planning board. So I think it's, it's a nice atmosphere to work in where people can state their position, and it's not, you know, there isn't a veto power or anything like that, you know, on the commission. That said, you know, I am a big fan of consensus. So if you have a situation where there is a split on the board, and there might be a way to, you know, as I said in my opening statement, to find some sort of broad concept that the whole board can embrace, I think, I think it's a better thing for democracy; I think it's a better thing for the community. You know, of course, people, you know, in the end, you know, have to vote their opinion, and that's what democracy is all about, but I think a lot of democracy is the efforts that you make before you vote, not just the vote.
Okay, thank you. Just confirming that we'll have a chance to summarize our opinion later in the process here. Thank you.
Okay, I missed the beginning of the meeting. According to the agenda here, am I supposed to disclose comments I've received from the public?
If you want to ask Danny about?
If there's anything you want to disclose, what we did in the beginning of the hearing is we disclosed the comments and discussions that were the intra-board discussions, and then during your deliberations, if you have received any comments or phone calls that have impacted the way that you are planning to vote, or that you feel are, should be disclosed, and, and disclosed and considered as part of this hearing, then I would urge the the members to disclose those communications. You can do that now and question Danny about those or make comments about them or include them in the final deliberation.
Okay, thank you. Danny, I think that was a very moving opening statement. I think you're a great lawyer. But I have to say frankly, I've known you since I first was elected to the board in 2007, I think, and the interactions I've observed you've had with other boards in town and in other settings don't comport with what your statements have been. You tend to be very aggressive, very antagonistic. You seem to oppose growth in town just because it's growth. You seem to be opposed to anybody who's a developer just because they're a developer. And, you know, I can, I can, I have no quarrel with anybody's opinions. People are entitled to their own opinions. I cannot, you know, I don't think it's appropriate for people to be on boards who can't work with other people, basically. That's my issue. And I have very strong concerns about your ability to work collaboratively with other board members without being disruptive and antagonistic. So I'd ask you to comment on it.
Sure. So first of all, you know, as I said, I'm not perfect, so I'm not holding myself out. You know, as always, I don't think there's anybody who always accomplishes what they want to accomplish every time. So there's no question, I concede that. That said, what I think is most prudent for the board is to take into account the documented information that they have. My candidacy has been up before the board for a couple of weeks now, and there's been ample opportunity for anyone to email the board and, you know, give their name and, you know, cite specific instances where they've had concerns with me. And I checked the DocuShare today and was completely prepared to, you know, respond to citizens who had concerns with anything I've done, and as I saw that there were 15 supportive emails. I am concerned that comments from citizens, I think it's an all right standard to ask that comments be identified with the name of a person, that they email the full Board of Selectmen, not just one person, or they're welcome to, I've no idea what anybody is going to say here tonight, you know, and anyone is welcome to say anything about me. So all I can present is my record and say, yes, I'm not perfect. I don't think there's anybody on the board sitting here tonight who's ever not lost their temper. But overall, I'm going to let other people speak for my record. And I know that, I'm not quite sure, Peter, where you've gotten the idea that I'm, you know, against, you know, developers. One of the things that I did on the Commission on Disabilities, a lot of my interaction are with developers, folks like Steve Steinberg and, you know, other developers, you know, in town, you know, working out compromises to provide access for people with disabilities that's, you know, also practical. You know, so, you know, all I can say is that my record, my record stands. And I'm sure if there was, you know, a situation, say on the commission, that I've sat on for nine years, I doubt that the chair would have written a positive letter about me. I'm sure that somebody from the Commission on Disabilities would have put something in writing, you know, with a name or come here tonight, which they're still welcome to do. So again, I'm not perfect. I make mistakes like everyone else. But I think one question that the board should consider is what's the standard to be on a volunteer committee? And I humbly ask you to consider that I meet that standard. Thank you.
I did get an email from Nancy Tavernier, and it was early on, in the beginning of March, March 6th. Nancy is very concerned about your appointment to the board, vocal about your opposition to development and building in general. Planning board is charged with planning growth and development, not denying it, those kind of general comments without getting into any specifics. But Nancy, of course, is one of the leading advocates for affordable housing in town. So that doesn't seem to be consistent with your statements about your support for affordable housing and how well you work with boards.
So I've met Nancy Tavernier twice. She's, my understanding is that she's the chair of the Acton Community Housing Corporation. And it's not someone that I have had a lot of interaction with. I'm not aware what her, and again, it's nothing against Nancy, she's always seemed like a nice person to me, but I'm not, I'm not aware of what her experiences with viewing me. I've never sat on a commission with her, I've never attended one of her meetings as well. I also, I also wish that she would have written the whole board as well. This is the first that I'm hearing about this email, and I think the whole point of the process with DocuShare is that these emails are available for the whole town to see as well. So now that I know this, this would be someone that I would want to, as I said, meet for coffee and tea and get to know each other, because I'm, I'm sad to hear that she has that impression of me. But this is someone who I don't, I don't believe, I cannot recall I've ever even sat down in the same meeting space with her as well. I had a small amount of interaction in the audience of, of a Board of Selectmen meeting having to do with the project that she's working on, on Massachusetts Avenue in regard to affordable housing where she needs state funding, and I was complimentary of the work that she's doing. So I'm sorry to hear that she has that impression, and I do wish she would have contacted the whole Board of Selectmen as well. Thank you.
Okay, I do have to say, I think you have, in my view, again, improved your communication skills and your ability to express your opinion in a way that doesn't tick everybody off over the years. So I do think that's a positive development. Let me just ask you again, I know you commented on this last, well, let me ask you again. We did get a, get a recommendation from the chair of the Commission on Disabilities, which is important, and I've never attended a Commission on Disabilities meeting. I understand, I know they've been around, you've been around for 30 years, you had your anniversary maybe last year or the year before, but, and you've accomplished a lot of good things in a, in a very difficult area to move people and educate people about. But my understanding of the board meetings on the Commission on Disabilities is that they don't run very smoothly, that there's a lot of conflict, that people can't agree on things. It's just been very difficult, is my understanding. And that's, again, from not having ever attended one, but from just having discussed it with people in town. So can you comment on that again?
Yeah, I think there has been some discord, but I do think that we are one of the most accomplished committees in town, and we've also, we've also gotten word from the state as well. Tom Hopkins, who sadly recently passed away as the chair of the Architectural Access Board, has told our commission that he considers ours one of the half a dozen or so most active in the state. And I don't know, I think a number of you guys attended our 30th anniversary celebration as well, which showed a number of accomplishments, not just past, but recent, you know, as well. We are very involved with the process as far as accommodations for town meetings. We respond to citizen concerns all over town from, you know, folks who, you know, are not able to get out of their, walk safely out of their apartment because there's no banister, you know, in their condominium outside. This is someone who had had two strokes, and she wasn't even, didn't feel safe to leave her apartment. We respond and have mediated concerns in regard to mental health issues in town to try to, you know, educate folks about mental illness, that it's not something to be scared of, but it's something that exists in every family. You know, these are tough issues, and yes, we have had some discord. And one of the things that, because I have some experience, you know, working in other organizations, we did contract out a strategic planner, which I think helped us a lot. And I think that, that, you know, what we came out with as far as the goals and objectives, you know, going forward, look promising. So absolutely, there is sometimes, you know, big disagreements, you know, on the board, but we consider ourselves a family. We have a social outing once a year where we make sure not to deliberate, of course. So, yeah, I think when, when we're in business mode, we're, you know, we can be tough with each other sometime. But that's okay, because we always make sure to have somebody in charge of the snacks, and there's no hard feelings at the end of the meeting.
Okay, one other question. I certainly respect your devotion to your obligation as an attorney to follow the law. On a lot of questions that come before these boards, particularly special permits, there is a lot of discretion involved as well. The standard is not black or white. I can remember being on the Conservation Commission years ago, and turned out a developer had built a house that encroached, in those days, 25-foot setback zone. And the question was whether we would require him to tear, well, this, this was the deck off the back of the house. Would he have to tear down the deck, which obviously would affect the price he could get to a seller? Or would we accept a mitigation plan that he proposed to try to offset the impact on the wetlands of this encroachment? You know, I voted for mitigation, and you look back and you say, geez, you know, maybe I shouldn't have done that. But that was just a discretionary decision. How, if you were on the planning board and you had to make a decision about something discretionary like that, how would you approach it? What would you consider?
I think that, that you can work on a case-by-case basis by still having a formula and a set of principles that you look at. And I think, you know, the big conflict is, you know, is that, you know, housing is something that is very crucial in our town, as I mentioned, you know, the waiting lists we have and the problem that we have with affordable housing. At the same time, our town is committed to environmental sustainability, you know, as well. So there are any number of factors that have to be looked at. And, you know, I wish I could, you know, particularly as an attorney, you know, this is what, this is what we do. You know, things are decided on a case-by-case basis. But I think, I think that what we have to look for, you know, more are, you know, creative outside-the-box ideas, so we're not just always looking at black and white. There's no question that sometimes, you know, people need to take a stand, you know, and say, you know, this is something that, you know, doesn't fit, you know, what we say our town is about in the master plan. So what I try to do particularly, and this is my, my legal orientation, my human orientation, is I go back to sources. You know, I try not to just think off the top of my head, you know, or to think of, you know, my experience with a particular neighborhood. But the sources that I'll be looking at is Massachusetts general laws, our town bylaws, and our master plan as well. And while the first two, you know, do give some discretion, I think our master plan, you know, is pretty clear as far as the type of town we want and the types of, you know, consensus, you know, that we're, that we're looking for. So those are the things that I will, you know, keep in mind, you know, when I form my opinions.
I just have one more question. There seems to be a faction in town that believes that there is a conspiracy between the planning staff and developers to push development in town. Do you agree with that?
In a word, no. I'm not a conspiracy theorist. And I don't see, you know, as I answered David's question, I don't see the issue of development being a yes or no. I think most people would agree that there's, you know, types of, you know, development that create a healthy community, that create the types of things that, that most people want, and there's types of development that the town has had a consensus to be against. So it should never be about development or, or not development. And no, I don't think that there's a conspiracy.
Okay, I just make one more comment. In these positions, it's not always the opposition from the citizens. We had the Concord Water Treatment Plant, there was massive opposition legitimately to it, but I felt that the final proposal fit within the zoning bylaw, and that's why I voted for it. So you can't be swayed on these positions necessarily by opposition from a large number of people. That's extremely important. So thank you very much, I appreciate your comments.
Even though that wasn't a question, so I'll comment on that last statement that you made. One of the things that I did mention in my training is before I went to law school, I was a political science major at Northwestern University. And one of the things that I think has been a debate, you know, throughout our, you know, political system is, to the extent where people who are elected to or appointed to serve office, how much do they look at their own core values as far as what's right or wrong, and how much do they look to the people? When we all know throughout history, there have been times where the people have been wrong and cruel and terrible. And I don't think there's any easy answers to that. But I tried to put in my statement, you know, a combination of my belief in democracy, but also belief in core values as well. And this is a conflict that I think will always be, be with us, and one that I look forward to navigating on the planning board.
Thank you.
In hindsight, what are your thoughts on the West Acton Village development?
So that's something that we were, that we were involved in, the Commission on Disabilities, particularly with, with instances of, I don't know if you remember, there was a variance application that Matthias Rosenfeld put forward when they were doing that most recent development. And I really liked what the Commission on Disabilities came up with, because the issue there was that you had, on the one hand, historic buildings where you wanted to, you know, preserve, you know, character. But at the same time, there was, you know, a wish to make the town center more vibrant, you know, as well. And the issue came down to, you know, whether elevators would be requirement, required to go all the way up, you know, to the top where there might still be public spaces. And if you take a look at what the Commission on Disabilities worked out between the state and the, and the developer, it was a compromise where we didn't feel that as much as our Commission on Disabilities supports the creations of elevators in almost every situation, here was a situation where it wasn't practical, and there were ways that, for example, if you have a dentist office there, that you could accommodate a person with a disability by having them go to a delegated nearby office, you know, for example. by having them go to a delegated nearby office, you know, for example. So I was pleased without, with, you know, the part that, that I and other people on the Commission on Disabilities, you know, played. And I think with West Acton, you know, just like Kelly's Corner, it's a balance. On the one hand, we want vibrancy, we want to encourage local business. At the same time, we don't want, we don't want the type of, you know, unhealthy congestion that, you know, can create harm for communities as well. But overall, I love, I love West Acton. It's one of my favorite parts of town and I'm very happy about the new ice cream shop, too.
So you would, the enhancements brought on by Matthias's redevelopment in West Acton, you would say are a good thing? Without putting words in your mouth?
I'd say, I'd say overall, yes. But, but I did have, I did have some concerns as well. But overall, yes.
So when we talk about, when you talk about the Kelly's Corner infrastructure plan was too car-centric, do you appreciate the fact that the mode of transportation in our town and in all suburban towns unfortunately is automobiles? It's how we get to stores, to do our shopping, to drop our kids at school, to drop them at activities? But it's unfortunately, it's, it's a fact of life and can you appreciate that the infrastructure plan is trying to deal with that?
I appreciate it, especially having spent nine years on the Commission on Disabilities and the problem that we have with, I mean, the phone calls that, that, that we get constantly from people with disabilities who even with the transportation enhancements that we've made, you know, in town, the work that Franny has done, which has been spectacular, there's still, you know, we, we got a call from someone the other day who had a doctor's appointment that couldn't be over until 4:30 and, and there wasn't a ride after that. So I know very well, you know, how much people rely on automobile transportation, not just, yes, to get their kids to school, but also, I mean, corner needs, just such as getting to a medical appointment as well. So absolutely. So, you know, my, my opinion, and I think we're moving in that direction, is finding a balance between, you know, of course, we have to serve people's needs and we can't leave people in the lurch. At the same time, you know, if you look at our master plan, we're supposed to be a future-focused town at the time of a climate emergency as well. So how do we find the right equation between making sure that we don't, we don't drop our core services, but at the same time, looking out for our kids as well? Because it's one thing to get a kid to school, but it's another thing to guarantee that kid that you're going to be okay for the rest of your life when a climate emergency may be coming. So it's all a question of finding the right balance, the right equation.
The, I did have occasion to speak with Ray Yocobi, who's chairman of the planning board. And he expressed as a general principal that he was in favor of the idea of a planning board being in compliance with the long-term goals and objectives of the Board of Selectment. And didn't use the term lockstep, as you have, but certainly he felt that this is the way progress is made, as if, you know, the major boards all are singing from the same songbook. So considering that and considering that he is chairman of the planning board that you've applied to, how do you, how can you relate your views and his views? And do you think that that would be a cooperative relationship on the board?
Sure. Well, I mean, if, if you take a look at what the planning board, you know, states, you know, as their mission, I think that both I and everything I've seen on the planning board, that we're in consensus, you know, with what the goals of the planning board, you know, are. You know, you look at, you know, studying the resources and needs of town, you know, particularly conditions affecting public welfare. I mean, this is, this is, you know, this is a mission that has, you know, gone up on our website, you know, presumably, you know, with the oversight of the Board of Selectmen. It says, "Using the master plan and related processes to plan and make recommendations for the development of the town with special attention to proper housing of its inhabitants, overseeing all subdivisions, the administration of subdivision bylaw, along with numerous special permits required by town's zoning bylaws," and the writing of zoning bylaws, which must be approved by town meeting. So I think it is, it is important that there, that there is, you know, productive interplay, you know, between our town commissions and committees and boards and the Board of Selectmen as well. You know, all I'm saying is that, you know, there should not be a litmus test, you know, to be, to be able to get on a town committee from the point of view of issues that are considered, you know, contested in town. So it's not, you know, for example, if we look at the Kelly's Corner vote, you know, about four-fifths of the people voted one way and one-fifth of the people voted another way. So it shouldn't be surprising or against the rules that out of seven people on the board, you know, one-seventh of the people, of the people, you know, feels that they weren't for the plan. You know, to me, that's a more democratic outcome and it's always what we should be shooting for.
The, I also had a communication, again, with Nancy Tavernier, just to, to back up Slough and Berry's comments. And specifically, she stated her concern about your often-stated opposition to affordable housing proposals for low and moderate income households. And she also expressed concern about your general anti-growth positions in general as those not being appropriate for planning board service. And I'd like to hear your reaction to that.
And just because I've, I haven't seen that communication before, did she go on to say where she had observed me at all? I, I say this again because as someone who, I have no recollection of ever literally being in the same meeting with her.
Pretty, pretty much what I read to you is the totality of the conversation that we had.
Thank you. So again, it's hard for me to comment, but I'm not sure what she's referred to. But if anyone has attended for the last year, my comments that I've made, both as a, as a citizen and also as a liaison to the Acton Housing Authority as well, they would know that I'm a fierce advocate for affordable housing. And there's, there's a record of that.
No other questions?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Now we'll move to public comment.
And I think our standard is three minutes?
Yes.
Okay, great.
Please identify yourself.
Yes, my name's Jim Snyder Grant. I live in West Acton and I support Danny Factor being a member of the planning board. I wrote this board an email, but I just wanted to pull out two points out of that email and expand on them a bit. There's an issue that might be weighing on the selectmen's mind that hasn't been mentioned yet. Danny is a loyal friend to Tara Fredericks. And I know that Tara has had a lot of conflicts with boards, committees, town staff. And I want to make clear that in Danny's case, loyal friendship also means telling Tara when he thinks that she's done something wrong or not useful. I want the board to be clear that Danny understands there's a difference between friendship and condoning everything that someone does. See, I've gotten that same direct and loving feedback from Danny as well, when he thinks that I, I'm doing something that threatens goals that we share and I appreciate it greatly. And I, he listens well when people speak directly to him about their concerns about his behavior. So I just want to make sure that the board sees Danny as an individual and doesn't prejudge him by the friends he keeps or doesn't keep. If you haven't, if you haven't spoken with him directly about concerns you have and listened to his response, then I, I don't think you should judge him. And I really appreciated this hearing, that you have taken that opportunity to do that. Finally, turning a volunteer down is a big and rare move that the town should reserve for clear dangers. Turning someone down who's been cleared unanimously by the VCC is a bad precedent at a time when we need more volunteers. I mean, look, no one's perfect. Every board and committee has people with behaviors that are sometimes problematic. Things are kept in check by having clear behavioral expectations that all board members understand. That's how boards work well. It also, it works by providing clear feedback when it's needed and by strong facilitation by the chair. The final protection is the ability to not renew someone's appointment. And all of these mechanisms are much more protective of our democratic government than prejudging a person based on rumors and incomplete information. In the case of the planning board, we're headed towards a situation where the board is likely to shrink its membership in a year. So the planning board and the selectmen will have plenty of time and opportunities to evaluate whether Danny's involvement is problematic or whether, as I believe, that all of his positive qualities will come to the fore on the planning board. Thank you.
Thank you.
Tara Fredericks, West Acton. Danny, when I get out of town hall and I am so upset about what's going on, and I'm not going to go on about the growth thing, but I call Danny. He's available at night. His loss, he is alone a lot, so please call him. And he almost always helps me try to understand the other person's point of view, even if it is a mob in my mind. And so he helps me with understanding and being empathetic. And he's always says, try and think of it where they're coming from. What are they going through right now when they're making this decision? And I feel like he's helped me become a better person for that. Yes, he's helped me be a warrior for the, the causes that we both believe in. But what better volunteer would there be if they're standing up for the values that are actually in the master plan? So for me, I feel like Danny brings to the table an ability to listen and hear and work through things. Yeah, we've had some feedback from the C O D, the Commission on Disabilities, because there's a couple of people that were really upset that he didn't go along with the Kelly's Corner thing, even though he saw things that he thought were really wrong, that the things that were being offered were things we could get anyway and we could make an improvement, et cetera, et cetera. So to keep somebody off a planning board on an item that isn't even coming before the planning board, the 40B thing, I, Danny spends a lot of time trying to convince me to support these various projects, okay? So, and that's not even coming before the, the planning board. So I remember when I was running for office the first time, Dory Hunter, rest in peace, he said, "You can't let Tara on the board of Historic District Commission." That's what it was. It wasn't the Board of Selectmen, it was the Historic District Commission, because there'll never be anything built in the historic districts again. And sure enough, there was. And sure enough, I had opinions. And if you like what's going on in West Acton, perhaps you'll look at the records of the improvements that we got in the design from people that actually had opinions about what they didn't like. And the developer said, "Okay, well, we'll get that." And the Board of Selectmen, the muse, all right? We doubled, tripled, I think it was, the mitigation or whatever it was. It was more than the Concord got, because we had opposing views. And for me, that, to me, is the most important thing. When I started in politics here in Acton, the boards were loaded with people. There was at least one or two opposition people on every board. It was wonderful. And you had people that asked questions and they did analysis and they, I think, made the, the whole process more, more valuable and more representative of the town. So for me, it's really important to have that. And I was very sad to find out what happened. And I, and I remember once I said, "Oh, the insiders will never let you do that." And Jim and Danny, Tara, don't say that. What are you saying? There's no insiders and outsiders. But when I hear stuff like this, I feel like, gosh, maybe, you know, why would this happen? And so I hope that you do appoint him to show at least that there isn't an, an inside and an outside, an opinion, if you were against this one, well, we're going to hate you forever or whatever it is. The Kelly's Corner thing, he worked to help me understand that a lot of good things about the project that I really didn't see at first. And so, let's see, how much time do I have left? And when I hear something like, "People in town say," I want to know who that is, because I feel like if people are not willing to come forward and say it in public, that that should be discounted and not allowed as testimony, especially in a hearing like this. And by the way, something that Danny and I have disagreed on very much is that I'm willing to go further to preserve historic resources. And Danny is willing to say, "Well, no, we need that housing." So we have these conversations regularly and, and I think that we're good friends, not because we agree on everything, it's because the way that we engage is so respectful that I feel welcome. And he's not always agreeing with what I say, but we respect each other enough to have a conversation. Thank you.
Tara, did you leave this on? Hi, Sean Wilkinson, West Acton. I don't really have anything prepared this evening. I think I said some things that I stand by at last week's meeting and I also have a letter on record. I will say, being involved in the A B community for almost 20 years now, as a special education teacher, parent, now a citizen, and I plan on being here for, for a much longer period of time, I do recommend Danny's appointment to the board. You know, he, as a person, he is an exemplary model of all the characteristics that people wrote about and acknowledged in the letters of support that we've all gotten an opportunity to read. Separately from that, I have witnessed both in professional circumstances as well as personal, Danny being actually the person that, that had two sides that were polar opposites, eventually come together in respectful dialogue and reach a consensus. And the fact that he's an attorney in good standing and has been for decades, he works in a type of law that deals with families, children, people in the extreme worst circumstances, probably the darkest periods of their lives. And he helps them and he navigates and works through by supporting them, but also, you know, working within the confines and the responsibilities that he's dedicated to himself with the, with regards to the law. I have not heard anything from a citizen's perspective that would keep Danny Factor or anyone else in a similar position off of the planning committee. We have a town that is in need of volunteers. There are a majority of people that, I think there's a concern that if a volunteer undergoes a process such as this, that people will be even less willing to step up and work towards bettering this incredible community that we live in. I also heard that things, you know, great things happen when everyone is sort of in agreement. I think the example is the B O S and the planning board. But I'm not quite sure that progress is made when there's 100% agreement at all times. I think that growth and, and really positive things happen when there's a lot of differing perspectives and when people are willing and able to listen to both sides and have some creative ideas and think outside the box. There is also nothing on record and nothing that I heard in either Danny's statement last week or the last week or this evening that in any way felt anti-development to me at all. In fact, I would say that quite the opposite. And so, you know, from a citizen's perspective, what I feel is that last week felt really, I don't know, I just had sort of a loss of confidence as a citizen in my representatives. And so I am thankful that there was the second opportunity. But there has been no, nothing that I have heard outside of this process or in this process where we really should be discussing things that would keep him off the board for any reason. And, you know, I just, I really hope that you really read the emails and a lot of people detailed in them and responded to a lot of the concerns and the questions that you asked of Danny Factor tonight. A lot of them were answered by the people that supported him in the letters that were made public. So I hope you strongly consider his appointment and really any other citizen that wants to volunteer for our community and represent us. And I thank you for the opportunity to have this second evening.
Hi, I'm Karen Buttett, Acton. One of the people who sent a supportive email. I wanted to speak on behalf of Danny's appointment. I know him through some of his public interest work as a lawyer, his pro bono work. I've seen him work with great dedication and the highest of ethics to help all kinds of people, as Sean had mentioned, who are at the darkest times in their lives. He's helped my family as well with some of his legal work. And as far as, I wanted to speak a little bit to his behavior at meetings, because I've been at a lot of meetings with Danny, some of which with a community group that some of us wanted to start, that would be sort of a mutual aid group to help other people in the community, get to know one another and maybe do some arts organizing and presenting of arts. And I found his behavior at meetings to be very consensus-driven and, yes, very assertive and he has a lot of ideas, but really making everyone feel welcome and making everyone feel like they can contribute something and they should say how they really feel. And he just, I find him to be a very tireless worker, to work really hard towards coming to some kind of conclusion and getting things done. So I really urge you to appoint him. Thanks.
Hi, I'm Susan Jake, also from West Acton. And I really appreciate the opportunity to have this meeting again and thank you all for that. I want to also speak on behalf of Danny. I work with Danny and have for years on Green Acton and I would like to support pretty much everything that everyone here tonight has said about him. He is a wonderful person to work with. He is very consensus-driven. He is very welcoming, very respectful and open to hear all opinions. And he works very hard to make sure, to try to build consensus and come to agreement. I have never found him to be difficult or obstructive. That doesn't mean he doesn't stand up for his opinions, but he is also willing to back down or to step aside when his opinion is not in the majority. So with respect to some of the concerns that I've heard from the board tonight, I don't think those are concerns. I don't think that Danny will be a difficult, obstructive person on the board. I think he will be a creative member of the board who will work very hard to make the best decision for the town. As a citizen of Acton, I feel that we are so fortunate to have someone with his expertise and experience who's willing to step forward and serve on the planning board, a board that we're having trouble finding enough members for. And I reiterate the comment that if we turn down people who are so experienced and willing to serve, what is that going to, what precedent will that send? What message will that send to other people who are interested or considering serving the town? I think it's not a good message to be sending out. So for many, for pretty much every reason that has been presented here by the citizens tonight, I think Danny would be a wonderful member of the board, the planning board. And I urge you all to accept him onto the board. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Alan Nidel from Acton. And it sounds like what you're looking for is a cheerleader here. And people who want to be volunteers should bring pom-poms. Thank you.
My name is Gregory Bishop. I live at 190 Main Street here. My wife and I have lived there for over 45 years, but that doesn't make us Actonians. I grew up in downtown Boston, she in Connecticut. I think I'm in the running to be one of the oldest people here. I may not be the oldest, but I probably am one of the ones that's known Danny the shortest However, I've been around a while. I'll read a couple of things of what I've done, but I think he's one of the most amazing people I've ever met. And I also have something that maybe few people have. I've retained him to help me as an attorney and he's been exceedingly helpful. I wrote some words about that. I got to know him better when I had occasion recently to retain him to support me in a small legal matter. I was very impressed. Working with Danny was a very positive experience for me. Now, yeah, you're paying the man, so he's not going to insult you. But on the other hand, when he disagrees with what I think ought to be done, he let me know about it, but, as I've again written here, with the utmost courtesy. I went from being kind of nervous about the issue to being pretty confident. Now, people, you've already heard the part I was going to say to remind everybody that this guy's had a lot of town experience and bringing that to a new volunteer job really is a great asset. But the incredible charity this man has, I mean, he started telling me how he charges and I said, "Hold on. I'm not rich, but I'm not poor either. I can afford to pay your standard rate." And to my shock, he thanked me and said that will enable him to be generous to more people that can't afford to pay much. I don't know if you've ever heard that, but it's something to hear a guy say that. In my time, okay, I'm an engineer, I'm technical. Most attorneys are not technical and that's a big difference in communication. In town, I have served as a scoutmaster for eight years about, going on 30 years as what we call a scouter, an adult member of Boy Scouts. And I've seen a lot of interesting and difficult issues in that. So I've dealt with kids and their parents and problems we don't talk about and resolve them. And I tell you, a man that's able to listen to people and elicit from them what they believe, there's a whole ministry that my wife and I are trained to teach in called Stephen Ministry, where you walk alongside another person and listen to them and help them talk about their feelings and their concerns and they're in the issue, to bring about perspective from the individual on their own situation. This is tough to do. It's enormously freeing when you've got that kind of help. And I'm listening to a man who lives that way. So I think, based on, if I can pull age, and not on some of you, of course, but most of you, if I can say that if age brings anything, it's the ability to hear a description of a person who is exceptional at caring about and helping other people. So I think you've got an asset here. And let me just read my concluding remarks here. I believe Acton is fortunate indeed to have a person like Danny. To put his name forward, to serve on the planning board, a person so dedicated to helping people at all social levels and so experienced in volunteering within the town organizations. I, for one, am certain that once appointed to your planning board, his dedicated efforts will help to greatly improve both our town, its present citizens, and its future ones. If that's not what a planning board is about, then that's what it should be about. And I wasn't able to be here last week or to help out. I didn't know how important this meeting was. Thank you for your humility as a board in doing it right.
Hi, folks. Couple of things that come to mind. There have been many instances in town where we've done things on committees. I was a liaison to the Commission on Disabilities. I know what some of the challenges are there. I was a liaison to the Historic District Commission. I know what some of the challenges were there. I remember the train station issue where we tipped off everybody west of Acton because we held things up. And it was always, that resistance always resulted in a better product. So I don't necessarily see somebody with an opposing viewpoint as being a negative. I think it's actually a positive. It makes you think, it makes you respond, it makes you really examine some of your positions on things. And, you know, over the course of my time on the board, I had to deal with staff, I had to deal with citizens, I had to deal with the law. Not like it's your fault, but... Which brings me to my other point. Being an attorney, as two of the board members are as well, you try cases or you argue cases and at the end of the day, you might get together for beers because it's not about personal issues, it's about the case, the merits of the case. And that's the way jurisprudence is supposed to work. And I think that that actually can be a very, very positive thing in resolving outcomes because then when you move on to the next issue, and there will be a next issue, no matter what we do, it gives us the opportunity to actually say, that's all behind us. This is a brand-new, brand-new board. It's a clean board, we start over. I appreciate volunteerism. For all intents and purposes, you guys are volunteers. I know you're paid, but it's ridiculous, but that's not my problem. If we don't move forward with pointing volunteers to this particular board, another consideration that this board could take is to do what many communities have done and make the planning board an elected board. Two-fold, that would be the citizens that would decide and it would take the special permits that you guys have to do off your table and put it on the planning board. So just some things to consider. In the age of absolutes, we don't often get a chance for a redo and you guys get a redo. Use it. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who'd like to speak? Well, then we will go to the board. David?
Before this year, I've had only, I had only passing contact with Mr. Factor, mostly at town meeting. But this year, I've had a chance to talk with him a few times. He certainly cares about Acton and is involved with the town and I respect him. I've gotten both pro and con input about Mr. Factor. The pro says that he's an honorable person. I agree. The con says that Mr. Factor pushes his opinion to the detriment of the process, something I can understand from observations at town meeting. Both pro and con jibe with my personal observations and consequently, I believe both the pro and the con are true. I don't see them as being mutually exclusive. I want to emphasize that for me, it's not about the unanimity of opinion at all. I strongly believe that a broad spectrum of opinions are required for the best collaborative solutions. This is something I advocate at work as well. I completely agree with Mr. Factor that different life experiences are an asset to boards and committees. However, I believe that it's essential to have a board that can work together to be able to achieve its work. Some people today talked about what's democratic and what's not, but it's inherently undemocratic for an individual or a small group to procedurally come up the works as a tactic to push their personal agenda on the majority. The question is not who Mr. Factor agrees with, but what style of member will Mr. Factor be? And that's the final judgment for me. In the end, I'm going to vote for Mr. Factor, but it's, as I said, I see the pros and cons.
Okay, I have a question first. I think I missed a part of your presentation, Madam Chair, about the composition of the planning board. I know we've gone, we voted to go from seven to five members, but that needs to go to the town election next year to change the charter. How many members do we have now?
We have six.
Six. So if we go to five a year from now, we don't know how the choice will be made of which, and there's still, if Mr. Factor were to get appointed, there'd be seven members. If there's still seven members, we don't know how that decision, somebody might resign or whatever, I guess. Okay. But the composition of the board will change, assuming that the town meeting vote gets approved at the ballot box. You know, I made clear that I have no quarrel with opposing viewpoints. My concern about Mr. Factor was the way he expresses those viewpoints. In my view, he has tended to be accusatory. Criticism is a good thing, but when you express criticism in a way that turns everybody else on a board off by attacking them or not accepting other points of view, that's destructive. It is not constructive criticism. And I don't think that that is a good thing for the town boards. Now Danny's made a compelling argument that he can work with board members. And like I said, I have seen a change in Mr. Factor over the last few years in his approach to different issues in town. And given the fact that the board will change, presumably a year from now, and this might then turn out to be just a trial run for the recently appointed members, I'm willing to support Mr. Factor's appointment.
Pursuant to Article 4 of the Acton Town Charter, the Board of Selectmen is authorized to appoint seven members to the planning board for terms of five years. It should be noted that our recent annual town meeting approved Article 29, reducing planning board membership from seven to five members. The vote was 75% to 25%, a two-thirds... The vote was 75% to 25%, a two-thirds vote being required. A ballot vote in favor of reduction is necessary at the 2020 town election for the reduction in membership to take effect. Currently, the board, the Planning Board, has six members. The Planning Board is an adjudicatory body dealing largely with the permitting of subdivisions. The Planning Board is not an advocacy board. In my view, an appointee needs to come to the Planning Board with no agenda and an open mind. In light of Mr. Factor's comments and support of Articles 33 through 36, those were the four non-binding, anti-growth citizens petitions that were on the recent town meeting warrant, all of which were defeated by a near-unanimous voice votes. I'm very concerned Mr. Factor would politicize Planning Board discussions of zoning changes and other policy matters. I also found unsettling Mr. Factor's comments at the December 18, 2018 meeting of the Council of Disabilities Board. Those comments were directed to crosswalks and the speed of traffic related to the Kelly's Corner infrastructure project. Based on detailed information Mr. Factor had been provided by the town staff, he had to know his representations were plainly wrong. Those representations were made to some of the most vulnerable citizens in town. My colleague Peter Berry and my colleague Dean Charter expressed concerns that Mr. Factor was anti-development. Mr. Berry expressed concerns that he was antagonistic in his work on committees. On or about March 18, there was a series of Facebook posts in response to the question, "Why Town Meeting Warrant Article 38 Does Not Have the Support of the Board of Selectmen or the Finance Committee?" Article 38 was a non-binding citizens petition asking the town to register its intent to acquire the Kmart parcel to prevent state agencies from making zoning changes easier. Mr. Factor offers his response and I'm going to read it. "I would not be concerned in the slightest that the BOS and FinCom did not recommend. There is a history of town meeting voting in favor of warrant items, sometimes overwhelmingly, that both bodies oppose. This is true in particular to the Kmart land where the BOS did not support having the land appraised, yet town meeting voted overwhelmingly to do so just last year. Only one vote matters and that is the vote of residents of Acton. The BOS is often out of touch with residents' sentiments, especially with warrant items like this, which have 'heart,'" it's in quotes. Also remember, the FinCom is not even an elected board. It is appointed in a rather undemocratic fashion by, of all people, the town moderator. In parents, we should change the bylaw one day. And of course, the money exists for something that is important enough to us, like a new school, fire station, or a unique community space like Kmart. Other towns have found a way and it is important enough to us, we can find a way. Danny, all five current Select Board members were elected in contested town-wide elections. We view matters coming before us in light of their impact on the entire Acton community. The nine members of the Finance Committee are appointed by the town moderator who is elected annually in the town-wide election. The Finance Committee is an advisory body whose members devote countless hours evaluating financial issues and whose recommendations on warrant articles town meeting seeks. Frankly, Danny, I can't take your Facebook comments in any other way than antagonistic." And this leads to another concern. You spoke this evening at the Planning Board. You acknowledged it is an adjudicatory body and its members were to follow the law. Will you be able to follow the zoning bylaw in all critical respects or will you follow your heart in these issues? So... Excuse me?
Is that a question?
Well, it's not for you, it's a question for the audience. Select Board members have been criticized for prejudging your appointment to the Planning Board. I think what you and your supporters don't appreciate is the effect of Mr. Factor's behavior and actions over the years and what they have had on other people. It gives me no pleasure, but I cannot support your appointment to the Planning Board.
The, I certainly commend Mr. Factor in all of his long service to the town and to the Commission on Disabilities and I hold no personal animus. I'm basing my vote, as people probably can predict, strictly on a philosophical basis that I feel that his, Danny's past statements and positions are inconsistent with the overall goals of the Board of Selectmen and certainly my goals towards how the town should move ahead and therefore I will not support.
As I stated at the previous meeting, I've been the liaison to the Commission on Disabilities for two years now. Those meetings go on for three hours and there is much discussion and it is very difficult to observe the committee and Danny's participation in it and I will not be voting in favor of his appointment. Is there a motion?
I move that we appoint Danny Factor to the Planning Board.
Is there a second?
No, I'll second the motion.
Okay, motion made and seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
No.
Vote is three to two. Danny is not appointed.
Move to adjourn, yeah.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.